Good morning. Welcome to the Court of County Commissioners Open Session for Thursday, May 22nd. And like we prefer to start every meeting, we'll start with Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is anybody?
It's him.
I think so. Commissioner Rothstein, I think you're first.
Okay. Just a couple of things. One, the weather doesn't look that great today. It's supposed to be a wonderful weekend, weather-wise, but across our country, there were some very significant storms and a lot of damage. And, you know, folks lost homes, lost their lives, lost friends, neighbors, and family. Continue to keep them in your thoughts and prayers. You know, sometimes we feel like we have it pretty darn lucky, you know, because we have power in our house and shelter. And it reminds us that there's a lot of places within our own country that are going through some devastating times. And that's first and foremost on my mind. It kind of dovetails into the Public Safety Awards event that occurred earlier this week that was hosted by the Chamber of Commerce and the Pleasant Valley was the venue. It was very well done. Always appreciative to see our servant leaders and those that have put themselves in harm's way to keeping our quality of life and our safety foremost on their mind. And so congratulations to all those that were recognized, from those wearing blue and red and those that are on the front line or 911 callers and emergency management. What it really showed the other morning was it is a team to be recognized. And we just have an awesome team in our community that works together and does not stop on the borders of their responsibilities. And they make things happen for our community. The next, I attended Mayor Stacey Link's swearing-in along with her, not her, Sykesville Council. It is the first time, I believe, in Sykesville history that they have a majority of female on their council. So another change in recognition. But also in Mayor Link, her comments, I believe, were very well received. They had thirty, I don't know, thirty-five percent, you know, of those eligible to vote, voted. And it was the highest in that town's history. They had over a thousand that voted. I mean, that is a statement.
That's impressive.
It's incredible. And she recognized that. She recognized the involvement, engagement of the community in moving forward. And I look forward to working with her along with all our colleagues at the municipal level. And there was other swearing-in ceremonies that occurred. I think all elections are over. And congratulations to all those that were victors. And also a thank you to all those that put their name in the hat to make change and to continue building on our communities. The last thing is we are walking ourselves into Memorial Day. I know there are ceremonies that will be occurring and parades and activities for Memorial Day, not to deter us from the meaning of Memorial Day and those that have given their last full measure of devotion to keep us who we are. And just a reminder, but also don't let that deter you from being with family and friends and community. It is a great opportunity, you know, to be there with all those around us. And life is good and I'll pass it on to you.
Well, thank you very much, Commissioner. Good morning, everybody. I, first of all, want to associate myself with the comments that Commissioner Rothstein has made, not only regarding those who've suffered from storm damage, and also those who have won the latest round of municipal races this week as well. And I also want to associate myself with the comments that you made about Memorial Day. I think they're incredibly important. And I also encourage, you know, everybody to participate in those ceremonies and to be with family and friends that day as well. So, all right, Chris, what are we going to do first here? All right. So the first thing I'll talk about is over the weekend, I had the pleasure of attending First Responders' Day at the Tawney Town History Museum, because it fell between both Police Appreciation Week and EMS Week. The History Museum and their volunteers always do incredible events. And what was really cool about this event in particular is not only did you have local law enforcement and the local volunteer fire company, but you also had Carroll County DEFEMs there as well. And so while I was there, hang on one second, Chris, I just got to set this up. So while I was there, I ran into Amy and Mel, both of who work for our Department of Fire and Emergency Services. And they set up this kind of little obstacle course or whatever you want to call it. And so you had to put on a pair of drunk goggles, you had to jump in one hoop, run to the next hoop, jump in that, then run into a fireman's carry of a victim doll, right? And a fireman's carry is to lift under the arms and pull backwards. And so myself and Mayor Miller here basically got volunteered to do this. And of course, there's a video of it. So, Chris, whenever you're ready.
You carried him? Oh, I thought you'd be carrying Mayor Miller. Come on.
And I almost ran, I ran into the fence at the end there. I don't know if you can see that. But so when you put on those drunk goggles, it like shifts your vision like a foot and a half to the left. And you just, you can't make heads or tails out of anything. But so I'll point out that while the mayor beat me by about a second in the race, he was disqualified because he did not do the proper fireman's carry. He picked up the victim by the neck and ran with the victim by the neck. So.
It's the same method.
But did the victim survive is the important question.
Still waiting on word for that. Still waiting on word for that. But no, that's all from me this morning. And, you know, I was really happy to be there that day. And oh, and also, of course, I had the pleasure of joining my colleagues at the Chamber of Commerce's Public Safety Awards. And I, like Commissioner Rothstein, I want to congratulate everybody and thank them for all of the services they provide to our county. And God bless them for it.
Good morning. Obviously, we've all had a very exceptional week. I think some of it's been just the amount of work we do. I know sometimes we all get asked, you know, what's a typical day in the life of a county commissioner? Well, I think I can speak for all of us when I say this, and I don't do that often. There is no typical day or typical week. This week's been exceptionally busy as we're heading farther into summer and it's going to continue to get busy. But just wanted to share a few things briefly this morning. And since a couple of my colleagues mentioned a few things, I'm going to be very limited on those. First up, wanted to mention the Carroll County Agrotourism Passport, which starts in June and runs through October. This is an impressive opportunity for the members of the community to get out. It's going to be a passport program to guide and explore Carroll County and support local It's going to be a passport program to guide and explore Carroll County and support local farmers and farms, discover local agro-tourism experience, and fresh food. This will be roughly twenty sites this year. I think this is a great opportunity, and of course, it showcases our ag community and agro-tourism, so kudos to everybody involved. I know this was both some private individuals in the ag industry that met with and worked with economic development to put this together. And I just thought this was something to highlight this morning, definitely something we should all be impressed and grateful we have in our community. Next, I want to bring up just briefly, we have EMS Week, which runs May 18th through the 24th. Can't say enough about our wonderful EMS folks. They do exceptional work. We saw some of that the other morning at the Public Safety Awards, and I got to interact with a few of them yesterday in an event I'm going to mention in a moment. But absolutely, just to anybody out there, thank them if you see them. Thank them every day, not just this week, but truly wonderful, wonderful people in our community. Saturday evening, I attended the Carroll County Veterans Independence Gala. It was roughly 200 attendees, included myself, Senator Reedy, Delegate Stonko, Sheriff Dewey's, Clerk of the Courts Heather Dewey's, Hampstead Mayor Nevin, and Westminster City Councilwoman Ann Gilbert. And it was a good evening, had about, like I said, 200 attendees. We also had Ed Sterrett. For those of you that are not aware, Ed Sterrett is a Navy Cross recipient in Carroll County, so got to hear some of his story. It was quite touching and very impressive. They raised about $120,000 that evening for their services they offer in the community. And I had the distinct honor, and honestly, was very humbled by this. Greg Callert introduced me. Greg was last year's recipient of the individual award, which I received Saturday. So just great evening in the community, as always. Next up, just wanted to mention really briefly, and I'm going to not go too deep into this. Obviously, we had our Public Safety Awards this week, just an exceptional turnout, and thank you to everybody, not only those that were there to be recognized, but everyone that's involved in public safety truly couldn't do it without them. Also, on Tuesday, I attended Planning and Zoning. And then Commissioner Kyler and I were in attendance at the VAC meeting that afternoon. Yesterday, I was at an EMS-related event at Texas Roadhouse. And I'll be really brief, but back in March, we had an individual who was at Texas Roadhouse with his fiancee and family. Mr. Corey Weaver suffered a heart attack in the parking lot. And through the incredible ability and diligence of two Texas Roadhouse employees, manager Rebecca Pennington and assistant manager Stephanie Poole, he was given proper care prior to emergency services getting there. And he has made a full recovery. And it just goes to show you, whether it's our fire, EMS, police, or private citizens, we do things very well in Carroll County, and it's a collaboration. And it was just truly humbling to see that. He was very, very appreciative of everyone involved in that. Also, yesterday evening, I attended the Historical Society's Board Meeting. And then they also had a limited open event that evening for the Mary Shelman exhibit they are doing at the Historical Society. For anybody in the public that would have an interest in attending the open event, that'll be Saturday, May 24th at 2:00 p.m. And will include a number of historic items, both relating to the Historical Society's ownership of Mary Shelman, as well as a very impressive banner that was part of the Farm Museum collection and was newly discovered. And then this evening at 7:00 p.m., oh, hold on one second, Chris. Tonight at 7:00 p.m., we have the 10th Annual Drug and Overdose Prevention Vigil that Commissioner Kyler and I will be in attendance at, at St. John's Portico. Always a very emotional event, but always one that the community rallies around, so just wanted to mention that. And certainly, now you can put the other photo back up, Chris. Last but certainly not least, I have to mention this young man that I think most of us have either met or are aware of. This is Jared or JJ from the Boys and Girls Club of Carroll County. He had won the Carroll County Youth of the Year locally, and he just recently won Maryland State Youth of the Year. So Carroll County has now won five of the last six years for state representative, and he'll be going to New York shortly to represent the state of Maryland. And I can say that is all for me now. Thank you.
All right. Good morning, Carroll County. Is that it? Are you sure you're done?
I hope I'm done. I mean, I could keep going if you want.
Try to top that one. Okay. Good morning, Carroll County. I've got a few announcements myself, and I'll follow the lead here. So on Sunday, I attended my second Crimgold Park Fishing Rodeo at Crimgold Park. And it was, we had over 100 participants, and you can see some of the participants there on one of the upper ponds. But another great event put on by your Carroll County Wreckin' Parks. My special thanks to Director Bob Hicks and his staff and all the volunteers that were there. Again, over 100 participants, great weather. I think the award, the grand champion fish was a fifteen and a quarter-inch bass. I think we've got some other pictures there as well. But the staff puts together some fantastic awards. Look at all those trophies. There's also fishing rods and all kinds of other fishing items. And there's me with one of the youngest winners and the very proud dad. I think that family actually won two awards. They're done by age groups. And then again, you have the grand champion. I think his brother won his grand champion, so... And yeah, but these kids are, these kids love fishing, and so do the parents. So it was another great event. And we've run, we've run fishing rodeos like this all throughout the county, but always fun to go to Crimgold's. And then, another announcement this week, very exciting news from last week. Okay, there we go. The South Carroll Girls Lacrosse has captured the 1A state title. Couldn't be prouder. I know a lot of these young ladies, and my daughters, really good friends with a bunch of them. A lot of people were in attendance. They played at Stevenson College, and they grabbed the 1A state title. So as a South Carroll Cavalier myself, I couldn't, I can't say how proud I am. I wanted to throw this picture in there. That's the athletic director for South Carroll High School, Tim Navatney, awarding one of the medals. He's done a great job, obviously. All these, like, all of our athletic directors work so hard to make these events work and to make these teams as prepared as they possibly can. So again, my special congratulations to my alma mater, South Carroll High School, the girls lacrosse team. You guys did it, and congratulations. And then lastly, I don't have any pictures for this, but last night, I attended the Carroll County Career and Technology Center Certificate Ceremony specifically for the Academy of Health Professionals. I wasn't there as a commissioner, I was there as a proud father. My youngest daughter finished the nursing assistant program there and received her GNA and CNA. All these students have received certifications, real certifications. In addition to that, they all worked internships while they were going through this. Very impressive. So you had nursing assistants, you had people who completed pharmacy technician programs, dental assistant programs, and physical rehabilitation programs. And several of the students also walked away with some scholarships. So again, there was a lot of people from the Board of Education in attendance, and our superintendent was there. I think there was representation from every single high school in the county as well, in terms of principal and vice principal. But a special congratulations to all those kids. Obviously, we're very proud of our youngest daughter for completing that program as well. And just another shining, bright example of our Carroll County public school system and how incredibly well they do. It's a fantastic facility filled by great students and great staff. So congratulations to all. And that is it for me.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yes, congratulations, Commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. And Career and Tech has more ceremonies tonight, one at 5:00 and one at 7:00. And I'm actually going to the one at 7:00, and I told Tim Weber, I apologize. I really want to come to the Drug Overdose and Prevention Vigil, but I'll be a little late because of that. And yeah, that, Career and Tech, which isn't what they call it anymore, but it's, I don't know if any other county has anything like it. It's just awesome. So what do you got for pictures? Where am I? Okay. Our current Board of Ed president, Tar Batagula, graduated on May 17th from the University of Maryland Global Campus with a Bachelor of Science in Social Science. And I promised her back a ways that when she graduated, I'd make sure I mentioned it. So yeah, congratulations, and now you can get, now you can get a real job instead of just being a soccer mom. But yeah, that was awesome. What's next? Okay. Down at Bill and Robin Chestney's House in Anaronda County, we got to go down one night this week and meet John Smith. Probably people that don't follow wrestling don't know who John Smith is, but he's a six-time world champ, Olympic champ, NCAA champ, and coached Oklahoma State for 33 years. Came from a family of ten. And he's so humble for all he's accomplished. It's so interesting talking to him. Came from a family of ten, four boys, six girls. He said until he was about seventh grade, two of the girls could beat the snot out of him. And a very humble Christian family. And he's got three, his three brothers, all were all-Americans in wrestling. All but one won multiple NCAA championships. It's just, it's just awesome. And the guy on the right, Ed Kelly, ignore the guy on the left, the guy on the right, Ed Kelly, he was, he's from Maryland, in the National Hall of Fame. He refereed the NCAA Finals when Jim Jordan beat John Smith. And the match was six to two. And like I say, John Smith is so humble and straight. He said, "Jim Jordan is a great wrestler." He didn't say the score till later in the conversation. He goes, "He beat me badly." He goes, "He made me revisit my work ethic and where I was headed, and probably made me a world champion." And then he said it was six to two. He goes, "But my two points were escapes. He just wanted to prove he could take me down again if he felt like it." And it's, it's to hear a six-time world champion talk about another wrestler like that. And then, like I say, Ed Kelly was there. He lives in Catonsville. Great guy. And Commissioner Rothstein, he's ninety couple years old, and he can still take you down.
Oh, he, I'm sure he could.
What do I got next? Oh, Man Vow, Manchester Valley Girls Lacrosse, undefeated season, won the 2A, Maryland State champs, I think a day later than South Carroll, defeating Glenell, who beat them last year. The end of the season, 19-0, this is the seniors. And they're either ranked first or second in the country right now for public schools. I, the last I saw was second, but I've heard that they moved to first. But, and they have, one of their players is the number-one recruit going to Clemson in the country. And so, pretty awesome. It's, I love Carroll County. I love Carroll County sports. And the staff, the ADs, the coaches do such a great job. And it's, and it seems like Carroll County has had some very, very strong girls teams in their history, softball, lacrosse, hockey. That's a picture of our Employee Recognition, Employee Appreciation Day. Awesome time. And our employees, like most individual companies in private enterprise, is the same, same is true for Carroll County, the employees, they're the ones that do the work, they're the ones that deal with the people, and we thank them.
Commissioner Kyler, what are you eating in that picture? He got you mid-chew.
I think it's a cookie. I think it was after...
I think that's his eighth cookie.
They were really pretty awesome desserts. I'm sorry.
None of, none of, many of these are not pictures I authorized to be shown, but, you know, it's, they have cameras at these events. It's, it's interesting. Okay. Hampstead Day, last Saturday, great day. I had some stuff from Citizen Services and some county stuff on the table. I shared the area with Delegate Thomason, had some of his information, and some of the delegation's updates from the thing, and some other signs and info. Great talking to people. Again, I love Carroll County, and it was a lot of people there. They had great weather this year. On Sunday, I got to be with Evan French and his family, who was an Eagle Scout for his Eagle Scout ceremony at the American Legion Post 200 in Hampstead. Just off, awesome. And on Saturday, I was at Hampstead Day all day. I just want to do a little call-out to Winners Mill FFA. Some of us went to the Westminster one, but they, theirs was Saturday afternoon, so I was standing in Hampstead, and I missed that. But a great group there. Public Safety Awards, I mentioned, Veterans Advisory is already mentioned. Yesterday, I did a tour of Carroll Community College, and a great tour. I did it with two of their, two of their Board of Trustees members and the president, and just great information. And then last night was the Carroll County Trustees' meeting. And we all talked about JJ there, too. And we think maybe the Maryland Award ought to be renamed for Carroll County or something. It's, it's, I hope they keep it up. I don't want to jinx them, but it's just awesome.
Oh, it's been incredible. I think they're giving the Chicago Bulls a run for the '90s NBA championships at those points.
Yes. Drug overdose, I mentioned. And I think that about covers my week. Like a couple of the guys said, we do a lot of things, and some of them, some of them are social events, but it's just great to see Carroll County and how much people here work together to make things happen. And it's just awesome. So I want to thank everybody. Thank you, guys, for your comments. And now we're ready to have a briefing and make a possible decision on Tonnytown annexation.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Well, Javier pulls up the PowerPoint. I will just introduce this. We are here for a briefing discussion and, if you wish, a possible decision on Tonnytown Annexation Number 49, which is at 3300 Harney Road.
Can you just quickly say, why do we get to talk about Tonnytown's annexation?
Well, as you know, an annexation is when county will be going into the boundaries of that municipality. The land use article allows you to make a recommendation on this prior to their public hearing. There's a 30-day period where they send it to us, we ask the agents, well, I think you might be going through that already, but, and then it comes to you for a recommendation. In this case, the recommendation isn't as impactful as it would be if they were going to make it into a more dense zoning category, in which case you would have the authority to grant a zoning waiver to allow that. In this case, as you'll see, there is no zoning waiver requested. So what we're really just looking for is a recommendation to pass on to them for the public hearing.
Thanks.
Good morning, Commissioners. As Mary mentioned, we receive an annexation on March 27th in regards to a property in Tonnytown off of 3300 Harney Road. As you can see in the annexation plaque, this property, this annexation is composed of two plots of land that are going to be merged so that the property owner has access to a sewage system from the city of Tonnytown. Parcel number one is a total of .46 acres, and parcel number two is a total of .11 acres, in this case totaling .5805 acres. The property right now is contiguous to the... and parcel number two is a total of .11 acres. In this case, totaling .5805 acres. As, the property right now is contiguous to the corporate limits of the city of Tonnytown and within the growth area, thus making the process pretty much straightforward. The property has access to Harney Road and Tonnytown Pike. And as I mentioned previously, it's a total of .5805 acres so that the property will be connected to the sewer services from Tonnytown. Why this came to be? The Carroll County Health Department notified the property owners that they had a failing sewage system. And the most cost-effective option for them would be to be connected to a sewage system for the city of Tonnytown. In regards to zoning, the property currently for Carroll County is in the R-10,000 category. Tonnytown confirmed the property will remain in the R-10,000, so no zoning waiver is requested. And as Mary mentioned, there is no major impact that would require one. Currently, as per the City of Tonnytown Comprehensive Plan, it is in the medium-density residential. For water, currently, the, the property is connected to the city of Tonnytown. If the annexation moves forward, it will be connected to the city of Tonnytown. Pretty much, our recommendation is that the city give public notice by posting the property prior to the date of the public hearing, which is in June 4th, 2025, and notify all adjoining property owners. Today's action, as Mary mentioned, it'll be for you to make a decision if the annexation moves forward or not. Any, any questions?
You said currently it's on the system?
For water, for water. Sewage is not.
Sewage is not, water, okay. I didn't realize that. I mean, I understand, I'm all for this, I understand why we're doing it. But I, I was under the impression that it wouldn't be, and we're annexing it in to allow it to be.
It is in long range for water.
Quotation, it's in the long-range category.
Okay, so it's in the footprint of long range?
Yes, correct.
Okay, that, that makes good sense. And being contiguous, it's, yeah, there's no issues. Okay.
Any other questions? So our choice is no action and bring them back next week, or go ahead and approve.
I'll make a motion to approve, sign and forward the comment letter to the City of Tonnytown regarding Tonnytown annexation number 49-3300 Harney Road.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great day.
You, too.
Now, we're going to talk about employment campuses.
Good morning.
Morning, everybody.
Mary, you just stood up and sat down, just exercise?
Just stay on.
Okay. So the Department of Planning and Land Management is here with the Department of Economic Development to request your direction on the ability to work with the Planning and Zoning Commission on some revisions to our Employment Campus zoning district. Our goal is to make this a more flexible and responsive district, responsive to today's markets. So I'm going to go over a little bit of the history, background on the zoning district, its intent, where you can find it today, as well as some of the issues that we're seeing in its deployment and what we would like to try to address. So, quick history. The Employment Campus was created as a zoning district in 2019. Prior to that, it had been an overlay zone, I believe. But it became its own zoning district in 2019 as part of the implementation of the 2014 Carroll County Master Plan and the 2018 Freedom Community Comprehensive Plan. It was based on the strategies, policies, and recommendations in those two plans. I'm not going to read all of this text, but essentially, what they, what they were intending with this district was to create a campus-like setting that had a cohesive design to it and was really geared towards the kinds of settings where you'd find uses that led, that had higher-paying jobs, highly skilled workers, those kinds of things. So that's research and development types of places, institutional office, flex space. There was some light and limited industrial uses, as well as a little bit of residential use allowed in these, in this district. We drafted that language based on the current market trends back in 2019. And as we know, some of those have shifted over the last several years. A few of the tenants of that zoning district were to promote walkability within that campus setting, to allow some limited residential development, if that was the desire, to create a little bit of a mixed-use type of environment, and really to prioritize the design of that campus and its cohesive, its cohesive nature. There was a sense of wanting to incorporate more natural features, open space, landscape, that sort of thing. In order to facilitate this, the zone was set up so that it would be approved almost in a master plan type of fashion so that the whole site was being laid out ahead of time as one cohesive development, rather than subdivided up into smaller lots. So this means that, that it has to come in as sort of a big-picture proposal, which has, was sort of, frontloads the process for developing that, that scheme. This is a little bit different from how we typically allow for commercial industrial developments in our other zoning districts. As I mentioned, some of the uses include principal-permitted uses of offices, hotels, conference centers, recreational uses, institutional uses. There are some conditional uses on the light manufacturing side of things. It does prohibit heavy manufacturing, warehousing, and distribution. And as I mentioned, a little bit of residential uses and some retailer service uses to create sort of a mixed-use type of environment.
So effectively, theoretically, I could live on the same plot of ground and then just walk across the campus to where I work?
Yeah, yep, that's possible. So in 2020, two properties were designated, that were designated Employment Campus were rezoned to this newly adopted zoning district. It's about 350 acres total between the two areas. On the left-hand side, the property in, the area in blue is what's zoned Employment Campus. And that's just adjacent to the landfill, right along 140 on the east side of Westminster. And the map on the right shows an area in the, on the far western side of the Freedom District. It's right off of Clees Mill Road, north of Maryland 26, also commonly known as the Delaney Property. So a few of the issues that we've seen in terms of being able to promote this type of development in the Employment Campus include the fact that there is a lot of detailed information required at the beginning of that review process, including the location and shape of buildings, ingress and egress, parking, architecture, signage, and landscape. And it makes it very difficult and sort of inflexible in terms of trying to find the right mix of, of uses and developers for these large parcels of land. As I mentioned, the market for the types of uses envisioned in Employment Campus has also shifted significantly, primarily after the pandemic. The, the demand for office-type space has dropped off considerably. And so, these are the kinds of things that we're, we're hoping to address with some revisions to this, to the language in the zoning district so that it would become a little bit more flexible, a little bit more responsive to contemporary markets. So our request is that you direct us to work with the Planning and Zoning Commission to reexamine the zoning district, particularly the review process that's involved with it and maybe some of the uses that are allowed, while still adhering to the main intent and, and purpose of the district. Our focus would be on incorporating that flexibility into the process and removing some of the regulatory hurdles so that we can see this type of development occur more, more easily in the county. Denise, did you want to add anything on kind of what you all are seeing on the economic development side before we open it up for?
Yeah, certainly, I want to thank the Department of Planning and Land Management for looking at this issue with us, because we're all on the same page. We want to increase more commercial industrial development. And with this zoning designation of Employment Campus, as Stephanie said, there hasn't really been any movement or interest in that on these two properties in particular that were designated earlier. And times have changed. So we want to make it easier to, for developers to develop. And we feel that relooking at this designation in these two areas is going to be critical for that. So we just want to make it easier, simpler, you know, eliminate any barriers. As Stephanie said, the development plans, you know, have to be very comprehensive upfront. And that requires a lot of cost and a lot of time and energy put into that. And we're just not seeing that type of development today. So we really think we need to have a little bit more flexibility. And, you know, we do have some opportunities, particularly in one of these areas, that we can move forward with if we can make it a little easier to, to, to test the marketplace for some development.
So is, the idea with the reevaluation, is it to modify what exists with the campus zoning district idea? Or is it to maybe turn it into something completely different?
It's to modify it, yeah. Just make some tweaks, make it a little easier, a little simpler. You know, maybe not require all of the comprehensive development process upfront so a developer can move forward.
Thank you.
So I have, I have a reservation on this. I always believe just because you can doesn't mean you should. And just because, you know, you have this property and it may not have the right developer or, you know, group that wants to build on it, you know, modifying or changing the goalposts to let them fit in isn't always going to be the necessary or the, the right way to go. You used a couple of words that I just, I have reservation about. One of them is making it easier for developers. I want it to be easier for the vision of Carroll County to be what we want Carroll County to be. And then, if a developer fits in that model, then that's where we want to go. We have very limited opportunity, and we know this, land-wise, you know, for growth and any real significant growth. And I don't want to just build on it just because we can build on it. I want it to be in the, again, in the master plan, in the vision of what we want. These are two properties, I mean, and, and I understand they're, they're out there, haven't been touched yet. We haven't had the right, you know, visionary developer to come in. I think working with them, whoever a developer would be, is, is a good thing. But making it easier for them, I don't think passes the right smell test. Providing flexibility can, you know. And that's why we have good representation on the Planning and Zoning Commission. And we have, you know, we don't just put willy-nilly individuals on that. We put seasoned, experienced, diverse, you know, community members and leaders on the Planning and Zoning Commission to give us that. So, so I agree with it going back to the commission to reexamine it. I don't agree with the intent to make it easier. You know, I, that, yeah, we got, we got to get away from that, I think. And I'm, as you know, about growth where it makes sense and building the tax base. I mean, I'm, absolutely. But I also want to protect the properties that we have that are limited because we don't have that much, you know. So, yeah, that's my two cents. I agree with the intent. I just don't want to make, you know, use those type of words, make it easier for developers just to build on it.
Probably a poor choice of words on my part. And actually, what we're asking today is really just to look at this again.
Yeah.
And to say, is it right for our intention and what we want to do? So we're definitely going to go through a thoughtful process to, to relook at that. And, you know, as we both mentioned, you know, no one's moved to develop these properties at this point in time. So there must be a reason for that. And, you know, market changes have occurred, as we've said. So I do think that really all we're asking you today is to relook at this.
Yeah.
So, and I agree, you know, we, we do have limited land. And, and that's why I feel like we need to relook at this because there's been no movement on it and we need to reevaluate at this point in time. So that's what we're asking you today, just to look at a reevaluation of it.
Maybe add flexibility is better than make it easier.
Yes, I agree.
If, if we say yes, and like you say, this is just to look at it, can, can you give us the process? And particularly, when there would be public input in the process? And, you know, what will happen next if we say, yeah, do this?
So we would put that on a future Planning and Zoning Commission agenda, probably. We could probably do July or maybe even June. I'll have to look at what else is on the agenda. And they would go through their discussions, however many meetings that takes. We'd probably start with just sort of an education process for them and, and some of the things that we've shared with you here today. And then try to hone in on the areas of the zoning district that seem like they could be made a little bit more flexible or respond to some of the current demands. And then they bring that back, they'd create their recommendation. We'd schedule time with you to share that with you. And then you can decide at that point if you want to pursue it, at which point we would schedule a public hearing. The public would be able to attend any and all of the Planning Commission meetings, participate in those. That would be on our agendas, and they could see where they could make some comments, either written or, or in person. And, and of course, your public hearing would be open to the public as well.
And I'll just say very briefly that, you know, I agree with Commissioner Rothstein. And then in addition to what he had mentioned.
That's a good answer.
Well, thank you. In addition to what he was talking about with, with, you know, making sure that, that what goes fits. You know, we do have, within the last year now, the, the Developer Rights and Responsibility Agreement policy, the DARA policy. So if there are particular issues, I mean, there is a degree of flexibility there where we can make sure that if a development goes in there of some kind, that the community is also going to be benefiting from that development directly, especially as Commissioner Rothstein pointed out, those properties that would be adjacent to it. So I agree.
Well, just to follow up on that, Commissioner Rothstein's points, I understand exactly where he's coming from in that thought process. And you already said it, we have a great group of individuals on planning and zoning. I have the pleasure of being the ex officio with those fine people. And, you know, I think there's been times in the past where they've come back with things that maybe this board didn't go as stringently as they had hoped. But they're going to, you know, they're going to definitely take the time and effort and energy to, to support and look into this and not just pass something just to pass it, whatever that might be. So I, I think from the standpoint of looking at potential, what you would call amendments, as it states in the briefing paper, adjustments or, or whatever. I think we're only looking at potential. So obviously, we're not just going to go run and do it. But to your point, I think we do have to be very cautious and aware how we approach these things. But, you know, at the same time, as we all know, we have a significant lack of commercial industrial, so we need to maximize that as much as we can. so we need to maximize that as much as we can for the taxpayers of Carroll County.
And I've got a few questions for you. So the two properties that you mentioned, are those the only two properties affected by this issue?
Those are the only areas where we have that zoning currently. Of course, if there were any future rezonings, then that would be those new areas.
And you listed prior to that slide, the uses that are allowed in the new, there you go, those apply to what changed in 2020, that these uses apply to that?
Yes.
Correct, okay. So going back to an earlier comment then, we want to send this to Planning and Zoning Commission, but I've heard a lot about the process, but this is what's allowed. So what are we really asking the Planning and Zoning Commission to do? Are we asking them to review the uses? Or are we asking them to review the process? Because to me, those are totally two different things. I think we need to be as specific as possible here. And in my mind, Planning and Zoning Commission, and yeah, I did serve on it, it's been, wow, decades, I guess. But this was more in line, the uses is more in line of the things we would take a look at. So I'm not really convinced here.
Sure. So one thing that's unique about this zoning district, and we have some other similar cases elsewhere in our code, but this particular zoning district actually does have a process that's included in the regulations that apply to that zoning district. So it's a process that's somewhat different than our typical process that's described in our subdivision regulations. So it mandates that they come in with kind of a master plan for the proposal that lays out the building locations and all of that sort of stuff. That's a separate process from what we typically would follow, and it is spelled out in that section of our zoning code. So we could ask them, if all you want them to look at are the uses, for example, we could ask them, you could ask them to do that. We talk about the process for a couple of reasons. Number one, because it also is part of that zoning text, but also because that is part of what we're hearing from economic development is maybe a stumbling block to the ability to market and have these properties developed, is that it frontloads that process in a way that's maybe not as attractive to potential developers or creates a lengthy process that increases their risk or increases their time, that sort of thing. But it's up to you to direct the Planning Commission how you'd like them to look at it.
I just like to give them guidance. So we're asking them to take a look at the process.
That would be our recommendation.
Well, with you, it says processes and uses.
I think it's both.
Right. Yeah, it's both.
I think it's both, yeah.
I mean, you're absolutely right that they're very different, but you're asking for us to focus the planning and zoning on processes and uses.
Right.
You know, recommendations, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
So if we look at that section of our zoning code, it covers everything. It covers the process, it covers the uses, it covers even some of the bulk requirements and those sorts of things. So we'd have them look at the entire, all of the regulations related to the employment campus zoning district.
But what we're not asking them to look at is the purpose of the zone. So I mean, you could specifically say that the purpose of the zone reflects what's in the master plan. And as long as you stick with the purpose of the zone, what we're looking at is, I think she used the word tweaking, to still comply with that, but to make things possibly more flexible and more reactive to what's...
And that is your request, I mean, the way you described it. I mean, yeah, okay.
And I think I prefer you look at uses and process and everything, knowing that the public's going to see it, the public's going to comment on it. We can later reject it, approve it, modify it, do whatever we want. But I'd like to let the experts come up with what they think and knowing that we can modify it any way we want.
Yeah, I'll make the motion that, as written on the slide, that we request the Planning and Zoning Commission reexamine this zoning district, particularly the development review process and uses allowed while maintaining the purpose of the district as envisioned. In the master plan stated in Section 158.081A or Alpha, focus should be on incorporating more flexibility into the process and removing regulatory hurdles to focus. No, let's leave it at that, 158.081A.
Second.
Second. Okay, I have a motion in a couple of seconds. Is everybody okay with that wording?
It's fine.
Any more questions, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Okay, now we're going to adopt a budget.
Motion to adjourn.
Hello, Heidi.
Morning.
So this is what made you all smile when you woke up this morning. So we actually have four things to vote on here in connection with adopting the budget. The first is water and sewer rates. You can let me know what you want me to say here. We talked about this at the public hearing, it's been advertised.
I did not have copies of the resolutions in my agenda, or my...
They should be.
I don't have them either.
They were emailed to us.
They were sent, but I never printed them off. That's off copy. I'm not like Commissioner Kyler, who is prepared. I'm not sure how he's prepared since Vivian's not here, but...
I know you use other words for that, but thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'll make a motion to approve the water and sewer usage rates for FY 2026.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Then we have the solid waste rates.
Motion to approve the solid waste rates for FY 26.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Then we have property tax. This probably needs some explanation. The commissioners have not changed the property tax rate. But going back some years to what people used to refer to as the rain tax, the county entered into an agreement with the state that we would dedicate a portion of our property tax to those water purposes rather than creating a new tax. So every year, what you're actually approving here is the amount of our property tax that will be used for that purpose.
Is it the amount in percentage or dollar amount?
It's actually a dollar amount. 1.49 cents. That would be of your 1.018 rate.
So it's a dollar amount of a percentage.
And I realize you just explained that to anyone that's watching or listening, Ted, but just to kind of put that comment to rest, I know there's a lot of times that various individuals in the community feel like we don't put any money towards the rain tax. We just said no years ago. And you're pointing out the fact that we do, as a county government, make that payment, but we are not passing that on specifically to each individual taxpayer. But as taxpayers, we, the county, that go ahead and pay that. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Prior boards never instill a separate and additional...
Correct. Yes, additional, thank you.
So I will take an attempt at the motion and correct me if I don't get this right. Motion to approve a 1.49 cent diversion of the property tax rate to the rain tax. Is that a sufficient motion or is that...
Well, the rain tax isn't an official term, but it's...
Watershed Protection and Restoration Fund.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to amend my own motion to Watershed Protection and Restoration Fund.
Right.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. And for clarification, we're not changing anything, we're just keeping things the same as they were. We're not changing the tax rate and we're not changing that wording?
The tax rate is not changing, but every year, we have to calculate the actual costs and how much of that tax will be used for this purpose.
That is a calculation that happens every year.
Yes.
There's been a lot of, there's been discussion about the Chesapeake restoration. Is this feeding into that at all?
No.
This is a completely separate...
Two different things.
Right, okay. I just want to be clear on that. Okay.
I didn't pass.
Okay.
Any further questions or comments?
So we did have a motion or...
Yeah, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
And last is to adopt the budget for fiscal year 2026.
Motion to adopt the fiscal year 2026 budget.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. My only question is, you two didn't sneak anything in here we haven't seen before.
I was hoping you weren't going to ask.
Now he has to admit it.
Nope, everything is as you left it.
And it works out to zero.
Yes.
Any questions or comments?
Good question. I'm just going to make one comment. I know this year's a little different than last year, but want to thank all of you, I know the five of us, and also want to thank Budget for their diligent and hard work on this. I mean, this is obviously something we all take very seriously, and we try to put our best foot forward for the public. So just wanted to thank all my colleagues for that as well as Budget.
And good comment, and I'd like to add to that a little. Hopefully, just stay calm, we'll pass this today. Regardless of the vote, we've had discussions, ours, we've had votes that were two to three, three to two, four to one, five to oh.
Yes.
And we've defeated stuff, we've added stuff. And yeah, it's been some great discussion. And one of the things I like to tell people, I'm thrilled of the four people I'm working with, do we always agree? No, we're not clones of each other, but we have some good discussions. And yes, good point.
Call for a vote.
Oh, I wanted to add one more.
We don't need comments.
Well, I just, one more thing that I think is important, right? I mean, the budget that we have is obviously a work of contending priorities and cooperation, deliberation among us. But for me, one of the really important things about this budget is we are being very fiscally responsible. Everything that we've heard at this point suggests that the General Assembly is going to be going back into session in the autumn to correct portions of their budget. And who knows what costs they're going to be kicking onto the counties? I mean, we're already going to be picking up about, or almost $3 million worth of state pension costs between teachers and the community college, and who knows what else might come our way? So part of what our budget has is that reserve fund, that new stabilization reserve fund. So God forbid, something comes down from the General Assembly, we have a pretty good preparation or sense of preparation for that. So I think that, no, the budget is a work of compromise and a cooperative deliberate effort on our parts. And so I'm grateful to all of you and to Ted and Heidi and everybody in management and Budget for that as well, so.
Call for a vote.
Any more questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think this is historic, 5-0.
It's been a long time.
And we thanked each other, which we should, but thank you for your work and the department's work, and tell all of them we thank them. They spent a lot of hours sitting, listening to us also.
Oh, they're listening now.
Yes, I would agree they are, but yes.
Now Ted, you can go crack open a can of Mountain Dew.
Okay, now that we have a budget, we can talk about approval to purchase Vista Protect Add-on Services, which is actually last year's budget.
Still, it's a bit like last year's for a few more weeks.
You'll have more of it next year, correct?
Morning, commissioners.
Morning, gentlemen.
Morning. The Office of Procurement in cooperation with the Department of Technology Services requests your approval to purchase Vista Protect Disaster Recovery Emergency Services from Personnel Data Systems in the amount of $31,750. The amount is approved in the FY 25 adopted budget.
Morning. What this is, is that in the hopefully never happens case, that the current payroll system goes down, this money will have a, what they call a warm site, ready to go so that if something happens to the primary site, we would have a secondary location from which to continue to administer our payroll to the county employees.
Motion to approve the purchase of Vista Protect Disaster Recovery Emergency Services from Personal Data Systems in the amount of $31,750.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners.
And now we'll look at approval of additional costs for a Cisco phone system. Replacement. Yeah.
Morning.
Good morning.
The Office of Procurement and the Department of Technology Services were before the board in 2024 and received approval to purchase the Cisco phone system replacement Verizon circuit from Verizon in the amount of $109,623.20. Since that time, a change order has been requested in the total amount of $46,080, which exceeds 10% of the original contract in per resolution number 1162-2022. Delegation of authority requests the board's approval to spend these additional funds. The amount is approved in the FY 25 budget.
I have six in here who can answer any of the questions in detail, but basically what happened, commissioners, is the original scheme that Verizon came up with for us to implement our noon phone system did not have the appropriate number of circuits that we needed in order to be able to accomplish what we need to do to go out. We worked on this for several months with them and other vendors, and this solution will now do exactly what it needs to do. The original amount that we were spending was under the amount that was budgeted before, so as it said, we're still within the budgeted amount, even with this addition.
So was it them who, was it Verizon who didn't, I guess, provide the proper, what would you call it, what was necessary for our system?
Correct.
So on that note then, have they taken any measures to make up for their own discrepancy?
So we have not been actually paying for any of the circuit that we had had provisioned previously, so that is sitting as a credit with Verizon right now.
Okay, all right. I wanted to make sure that they were taking responsibility in some way.
Yes.
Thank you for that.
And you're still comfortable that with this change, this is still the cheapest answer?
It is, yes.
I mean, a 40-plus percent change order is pretty significant. Like, it was just completely underestimated cost.
Yeah, so this is establishing a second circuit...
Right.
That goes from, so the pathway that our phone system will take is there is a circuit that we have that goes from this location to Ashburn, to a data center. From Ashburn, there needs to be two circuits to get to where Cisco's hosting the actual phone system at. Currently, there is only one circuit in place going to one of their two locations.
Motion to approve the additional cost for the Cisco phone or system replacement Verizon circuit from Verizon in the amount of $46,080.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners. Have a good day.
You too.
Okay, it looks like the rest of our... Okay, it looks like the rest of our meeting relates to public work, so we'll start with replacement of water service laterals.
Good morning Gentlemen.
Good morning to you. Morning Ryan.
Good morning. The Office of Procurement in cooperation with the Bureau of Utilities requests the Board of Commissioners approval of a change order to HDI contractors in the amount of $17,690 for additional work associated with the recently awarded contract for the replacement of water service laterals on Cimarron Place, Sooner Court, and Tulsa Road within the Freedom District Service Area and Commissioner District 5. This change order exceeds 10% of the original contract per resolution number 1162-2022. Delegation of authority that requires the board's approval to spend these additional funds. The change order amount is within the adopted budget and capital project.
Gentlemen, the current contract for the replacement of water service laterals within the Freedom District was awarded to HDI contractors this past April. As they began work, it was soon discovered that fill conditions for Cimarron Place, water main and water service connections within the cul-de-sac area were inconsistent with our as-built drawings, that the main extended beyond the limits of the pavement and the water services impacted private driveways. To correct these issues, Bureau of Utility staff instructed the contractor to modify the water main and to relocate the water service laterals that serve the homes within the cul-de-sac. This change order is for those drawings. Had this construction occurred during this time period, these errors would have been found by staff and corrected. So this shouldn't happen. Well, with new construction, these issues should not happen anymore. However, saying that, since this item was submitted for inclusion on this agenda, a similar matter has occurred on our current water valve bolt replacement project, and we'll be before the board next week for that item. Very similar circumstances.
I feel like you're giving us good news, bad news, good news type of situation. What's the original cost of this?
It was $143,000.
So it's just above the 10% change order.
Yes. And had the contractor known, he would have bid differently, and the bid would have been a little bit higher.
Okay, I'll move the board approve. Change order for additional work associated with the replacement of water service laterals within the Freedom District to HDI contractors in the amount of $17,690.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. So this is for water services, but also modifying the main?
Yes, the main actually extended beyond the end of the pavement. It was still within the ride of way, but it was beyond the end of the pavement. So the blow-off valve for that water main was actually in somebody's front yard.
Yes.
So we pulled that back to stay within the limits of the cul-de-sac.
So you didn't have to extend it, you actually shortened it to make it legal?
We had to install a new thrust collar.
Any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
They could make a water slide out of it.
We could.
Now roof replacement for Safe Haven.
Morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
Morning. The Office of Procurement in cooperation with the Bureau of Facilities requests your approval to complete the removal of the existing roof, replace with standing seam metal roof panels, fascia, trim, and snow retention system on the Safe Haven building using Garland DBS Incorporated in the amount of $559,973. Garland DBS Incorporated was awarded a competitively bid contract from Omnia Partners. JBK Contracting of College Park, Maryland, an authorized agent of Garland DBS Incorporated, will perform the work. This amount is within the adopted fiscal year '25 budget.
Commissioners, Safe Haven was constructed back in 2003 with an addition in 2006. The current roof is a standard shingle roof, and it's reached the end of life. We had made multiple repairs through the entire area of the section, whether it was in 2003 or the sixth section. Garland will be removing the entire system down to the decking, replacing any wood that may be rotted, and they're going to replace it with the new metal standing seam roof for longevity aesthetics. And that metal seam will provide low maintenance, hold up to the weather. It's 26-gauge standing steam. With that being said, it's also a 30-year warranty on that metal roof. As Ryan mentioned, they're also going to do the facade and then trim and the downspouts. It's a total package deal. This facility here is, it's a county-owned, but it's operated by HSP. It's two halves in this building. The one half is a night-by-night shelter, and the other half of the building supports long-term housing for individuals, Carroll County individuals that's looking for housing. And any other questions, you can let me know.
The removal and replacement shouldn't disrupt the use of the building.
Absolutely not. Yep, we met on site and talked to the end-users and even came up with a plan on what that picture really looks like.
This was a competitive, okay, it was a competitive bid. Were others close to this?
So JBK came in at 559, Apex came in at 581, Harbor Roofing came in at 595, Raintree 702, and Midstate 702. So fairly close.
Yeah. Okay.
Any further discussion or questions?
We've used them before. I apologize.
Yeah, so Garland.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, so Garland is our roofing contractor who we use all county facilities. And then Garland bids it out, it's a Garland warranty, it's a Garland product, and then they go out to their subs who are Garland certified for the installation. And get the prices through the Omni contract. So if we have problems, we're calling Garland who owns the roof for the warranty.
And they did the roof on this building.
That is right, yep.
Any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
We haven't made a motion.
We gotta make a motion.
I thought you made a motion. I thought he said.
Sorry, sorry.
It's okay, we're still thinking about, we all passed the budget 5-0, it's okay. I move the Board of Commissioners approve the roof improvements at the Safe Haven building to Garland DBS, Inc. in the amount of $559,973.
Second.
I have a motion and a second now, so any further discussion or questions? I should pay attention, shouldn't I? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Now, Kohler Diesel Generator.
The Office of Procurement in cooperation with the Bureau of Facilities requests your approval to award the purchase and installation of 1.37-kilowatt Kohler Diesel generator and transfer switch. This is a turnkey project for Fidelity Power Systems in the amount of $98,543.70. This unit will be installed at the Taylorsville Tower in Taylorsville Voting District 4. Kohler Power Systems was awarded a competitively bid contract through Sourcewell, a cooperative purchasing consortium for which Fidelity is an authorized dealer. This amount is approved in the fiscal year '25 budget.
So this tower, Commissioners, plays an important role for the communication infrastructure throughout the county. Due to the importance of the operations, it's critical to get these generators replaced on the schedule that's followed in our CIP project for generator replacement. So this does fall within that replacement period.
Motion to appro, I'm sorry, Commissioner Garan, do you want to, you sure?
That's fine, yep, appreciate it.
Motion to approve the purchase and installation of 1 Kohler Diesel generator for the Taylorsville Tower to Fidelity Power Systems in the amount of $98,543.70.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
All right, have a great day.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Now, operation of Carroll Transit System.
Good morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
The Office of Procurement in cooperation with the Department of Public Works requests your approval to award a term contract for the operation of the Carroll Transit System at a cost of $2,579,336.38 for fiscal year '26. Ride With Us Incorporated, the Department of Public Works solicited proposals for the operation of the Carroll Transit System, with Ride With Us being the only respondent. This project is grant-funded and has been approved by budget.
Good morning Commissioners. We put this out to bid in March, and as Ryan said, Ride With Us was our only respondent. That is not out of the ordinary for this contract. They were the only people that responded the last time it went out to bid. I don't know whether procurement has reached out to any of the other potential bidders.
It's location. Everyone else that downloaded everything was Virginia, California, New Jersey, they were way too far away.
And the last time this went out to bid, we did the same process and asked, and it was also the size. So there wasn't anybody local, and it was just the size of the contract was too small to move here to take over such a contract. So this contract will be five years with two one-year options. The 2.5 cost is just for FY '26, which was in the budget you just approved 12 minutes And we have MTA approval to move forward, and this contract improves, the 2.5 includes all three services, so door-to-door, and triple laser, and the veterans in that number.
The increase from last year to this year, significant or?
It was expected, it was what we expected it to be. It's slightly less than what we had budgeted for, because I, we brought that up just a little, just in case, but it is what we expected it to be.
So the 2.5, give or take, that is being requested through that grant funding, is that for all five years or for each year individually?
That is just for FY '26. For all five years, it is just over 15.7.
And you know offhand how much of that is specifically funding from the county? Because I know over the next couple of years, as funding from grants evaporates at the state and federal level, that we're going to have to contribute more as a county in order to keep something like this running, so do you?
Yes, so the only, the only funding that I can definitely say is evaporating is our CARES funding, because that has to be spent by the end of '26. We have about $500,000 left in that, so we'll spend that next year, and then that will not be an option anymore. I can't definitively say what our other federal funding is going to look like. I know for FY '26, I know, I don't know. I think for FY '26, we're pretty safe, but I'm not sure about, you know, going forward. So right now, we get about, little under 50% in grants from FTA/MTA.
So worst-case scenario, let's say the federal grants completely disappear, state, everything is gone. What do we have to contribute as a county to keep up with this?
For this contract specifically, to pay the vendor, it would be the 15.7 over the five years, if we lost all funding.
So roughly 3 points something, give or take, per year?
Give or take.
So. I mean, it's definitely a challenging time, you know, with federal grants. You know, we all know that and recognize that, and Commissioner Vigliotti brings that up. Can we make this contract contingent on?
It is.
Federal grants?
Yes.
So share with me then.
So it's part of the, it was part of the bid documents that is grant-funded, and the county has the right to cancel the contract should funding disappear.
Okay.
So, I mean, we could then choose, I'm not really, I'm not sure.
You do that or we do that?
I'm not sure what that would look like. I don't exactly know how we stop transit services, but that is the option in the contract.
Okay. Good answer.
And just a little bit more on that, any of the term contracts that have renewals on them, one of the stipulations that we put on all of them is fiscal availability. So if anyone comes across, we don't have it in the budget this year, then we will not renew them.
So even if, the original question was other grants going away, but if, if we change the budget, that's still justification?
Yeah, county, grant, any of it, if that availability is not there, we're not going to put the county in a bad situation with that.
And just one more, one more question from my own clarif, understanding here. So that 15.7, give or take, that you said that this would cost us over the next five years, is that the sum total of everything without the grants, or is it in addition to the money that would have come from the grants?
That is the total of the contract. That doesn't take into account any grant funding at all. That is what the total would be paid to the vendor for the five years.
If we had zero grants at all?
Correct, yes. That's how much they'll get regardless of where we get the funding to pay it.
Does that make you ready?
I, I, I just, I have some reservations about, I don't know, I, I guess, I understand that there's the severance clause without grants, I understand that, I'll take that point. My only concern is that if, again, if, if all of those grants evaporate, and while there is a strictly legal framework for us to, you know, unencumber ourselves of this, of a transit service, the fact is that there are a lot of people who rely on it. And so, I mean, to be realistic here, again, maybe more for the sake of just saying it rather than the sake of, you know, making an argument about it one way or the other. You know, if those grants evaporate, this is, I mean, the funding will have to come from the county. You know, you can say that the contract is canceled because there's no grant, but realistically, are we really going to be able to abruptly stop a transit service from one year to the next?
Correct.
That's the concern that I have with, with this. I mean, I, is, so to that point, is a five-year contract in our best interest, would it be better to do a two-year contract? Would it be better to continue to do this year by year for us to be able to reassess things on an annual basis based on what we get from the grants?
We will come back before the board every year to get your approval to renew the contract. That's why we didn't do the full 15.7, and we just did, because you just approved the FY '26 budget. Now that we have a budget that we could ask for money out of, we can't go beyond that. So come once the '27 budget, we'll be back to make sure that you're okay with renewing the contract.
The continuation, right.
So it'll be a yearly thing every year.
So we are only funding this 2.579 FY '26, and we have planned '27, '28, '29, the rest.
Right, and I understand the planning, but it says here that the contract will be for five years with two one-year options, and that's, I guess, where I'm having some confusion, understanding it, or trying to figure that out.
Well, I think we want a long-term contract, we want stability with this, and we have the option to back out of it.
Yeah, you can always back out.
So in theory, it's a one-year contract, but in reality, it's five years to maintain stability.
That makes sense, that makes sense.
Yeah, there are options available.
Him, and now you're saying I make sense.
And Ted's just here for looks?
Really not. Commissioner Vigliotti's question, I mean, the questions you're asking are stuff that are on my mind all the time. What if something bad happens? But we have no reason at this point to think your scenario is going to happen. If some of this money does go away, it's unlikely to all abruptly go away at one time, leaving us waking up one morning saying, oh no, what do we do? We almost certainly would have more time to think through options and where we're going to go from here. So I think the questions you're asking are good questions to ask, but I wouldn't worry too much about them.
I appreciate that, thank you.
You give it to Ted, Ted worries for you. All good.
It's, we went Ted to sleep at night, so it's good, responsible discussion. It really is. So do you want to make this one or not?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the award of a, I'll make the motion to approve the award of a term contract for the Carroll Transit System to Ride With Us LLC in the amount of $2,579,336.38.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ted.
And good discussion.
Thanks Ryan.
Do we have any public comment in the building or on the phone or?
Yes, sir, I do have a public comment on the line, I believe. Caller, if you could use star six to unmute, you will have three minutes to make your comment. Please start with identifying yourself today.
Yes, good morning Commissioners.
Yes, good morning, Commissioners. Catherine Adelaide, a member of the Carroll County Republican Central Committee. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you virtually today. I'll jump right into it. We had our Carroll County Republican Central Committee last Thursday in anticipation of the upcoming holiday on May 15th, state dinner speaker. And then our next big project is the carnivals, the summer carnival's coming up. So we have Brice Carnival in June, we have Winfield Carnival in July, and we have Hampstead Carnival in August. So I'll be giving more information about that, but I love the carnival, I love the carnivals. They're really a great place to go, and usually we see most of you out there. I'm also on the pro-life subcommittee of the, of the committee, so I'm going to give a pro-life report. Maryland Right to Life is doing a campaign, a congressional to defund federal Planned Parenthood. It's targeted specifically Congressman Andy Harris. So, but even if you don't live in that district anymore, if you just go to the website, you can still very easily, you know, put in your two cents to please defund Planned Parenthood. I think that's a great initiative. Defend Life, I consider this one of the biggest pro-life events in Carroll County. Will be in Westminster, June 23rd through 27th, from 4:30 to 6:00 on Route 140. Drive by, wave at us, or stop and hold a sign. There's a picnic to follow. We do use victim images to really demonstrate, especially in Maryland, the ugly truth about abortion. So some people object to it, but I object to killing a full-term baby at the moment of birth for any reason. So we do hope that you'll show up for that. And then, let's see here, Carroll County Right to Life, somebody keep my time for me. That also met on May 15th. I was at the other meeting, so, but our President, Stephen Leon, is working on a conceptual phase of a safe baby box for Carroll County. And I think this is something that everybody can get on board with, because when, you know, young girls or women, you know, have babies, we don't want to see them get criminally prosecuted for abandoning that baby. So the idea is to raise probably $15,000 and locate a safe baby box that's climate-controlled and takes care of that baby and preserves that baby's life. So I'm really excited about this. I think it's something that everybody could get on board about. And then finally, I attended the Tri-District Republican Club meeting on Tuesday. We had Greg Malvoe as our guest speaker from Board of Education. He spoke about the blueprint and the waiver, and it's my understanding that Carroll County is the only county in all of Maryland that got a waiver, so congratulations on that. Just, I hope you'll put out a PSA to please don't drive drunk or drugged this holiday, and I hope you all have a very happy Memorial Day. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other callers?
That's all I have on the line, sir.
Okay. Any administrative session open? I think we should discuss Freaky Fridays?
I think the official term is Summer Fridays.
Oh, Summer Fridays, okay.
I call them Freaky Fridays, but yeah.
Can you tell us what we did last year?
Yes. For the last several years, we started at the Friday before Memorial Day weekend and ended the Friday just before Labor Day weekend, where we give staff two hours of administrative leave on Fridays, and close our operations at 3 o'clock. So if you work from 8 to 5, like so many in the county office building, for example, you would be able to leave at 3, and then the two hours of administrative leave would make you whole. If you happened to work a different schedule, and maybe you came in at 4, 7 or something, you'd still get two hours, you'd just leave, two hours or more. So, if the board would be amenable to doing it again this summer, I think you'd make people, in addition to passing the budget, which people will be very happy from that perspective, but they'd also be very happy ahead of us as well.
I think the productivity, at least in my tenure here, has shown that this provides a very strong productivity through the summer and appreciation for the workforce. So I'm absolutely for it.
Okay, good. Is anyone interested in making a motion that we do Summer Fridays as, as we did last year?
I'll make that motion.
Second. Motion and several seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very, very much, both for the budget and the, and the consideration of staff in that budget, as well as this.
We did because of you. We did because of you.
Say, does it apply to the, to you?
Yeah, as opposed to 7:00 p.m., maybe it'll be 6:30.
Myself and several other folks don't necessarily leave on Friday.
No, it's, 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 uh, to me, it's like coffee breaks, it's like brunch breaks, it's like, it's a, it's a relatively inexpensive way to reward employees, and I think you get more out of it than it costs. So, yeah, it's super.
Thank you, thank you very much. People, I'm, there, there are, people are screaming in happiness.
Oh, I bet, I bet, I bet. I'd, I'd like to mention something, and this is, well, the first part is good news and involves all of us, and then, and then I've got a couple comments for me. I think all four of us eligible have now filed for next election to be Commissioner again.
That's correct.
All four. I was the last, and you're, you're termed out, and we can try to make an exception.
Absolutely not.
You're done. And, and, and I think it's great. And if, if people want to run against us, I think that's great. The one thing I just feel like I need to mention, we've had some very vocal people, I call them haters, and, and particularly on social media, and that's fine. I chose to post a photo of my wife and I, and the filing papers. Everything on those filing papers is public information. It's on the Board of Elections website. One of the, I call him the rebel without a clue, one of the gentlemen on Facebook decided to post all over the place that I gave out all my personal information, and call me and text me and disrupt me and come to my house and do whatever. A, it's public information, it's not personal information. B, my cell phone number has been out there for at least a dozen years, my home address is out there, and I encourage anybody that wants to talk to please contact me. And then the, the second post that I saw, I was told about, I don't look at them, that this gentleman got more clicks than I did. I've never been that insecure nor bored with life to know how many clicks I get, and I just, I, I think it's, and, and I won't speak for myself. I'm, I'm very proud that the three of you have filed and you're running for office, and I think it's good news and it gets the information out, and I just, I, I get upset when, when positive information is turned to negative by some people. And again, my cellphone's out there, it's 443-340-5667, call, text, that, do whatever you want, that I, I consider part of our jobs, and I think everybody sitting here does, is that we get input from Carroll County residents, and I encourage that. And for that to be a negative, I just don't understand, and I don't understand a lot of things. Any other admin?
Just one, I guess, one quick thing, and I know I mentioned this sometime last week. I'm not quite sure how, how we might go about it or how we might pursue it, but over the last couple of months, there has been information that's come out about how foreign manufactured renewable energy devices, machinery, solar panels, batteries, wind turbines, that sort of thing, have undocumented communication and control devices that are included in them, so that the parent, the company that produces them from a different company has the ability to shut them off and get around any firewalls. So given that, you know, we were contending with solar industrial development of farmland, and obviously the overall grid relies upon solar-generated energy, I'm not sure whether or not we should look at some kind of safety or security evaluation or protocol from the county side of things for any solar development that goes into this county. I think that's incredibly important, because if you can hack into an energy-producing system, you shut down the system. And obviously, because Maryland is so heavily weighting its own energy infrastructure on the promise of renewable energies, I think that we have an obligation or responsibility to inquire at least about whether or not there are any security protocols about the sorts of things that are being installed, or being installed, and if not, whether we ought to enact some of them ourselves at the local level. And I'm, and I'm obviously not opening it up, I don't want to have a discussion about it if you don't want to today, but in, in the future, at a meeting, to have some kind of conversation about this.
I mean, it is a concern, and I know, I think, I don't know if all of us have seen those articles. I saw one or two myself earlier, I guess it was this week or last week. I'd be curious to know if there's anything from the, the federal level that's being looked at. I would assume they're going to step in and make some observations or discussions about it. I don't know if it's something we'd want to necessarily get into. I'm not against it, I'm just curious if, whether that's something they're going to be looking at first.
And also, I would think that the energy receiver?
Yes.
You know, BG&Es, Pepco's, those would be the one who would regulate what is allowed to be, you know, attached to their system. It's their system that, so.
Well, and in, in Reverb, you're correct, but the problem is that they've been finding undocumented things that haven't been approved, so, but simply by going back and looking at what was installed, they've been finding things that they didn't authorize to. So then that's the concern, is that it's undocumented, that it's, it's, you know, unauthorized, so that, and I'm not, again, I'm not sure whether or not that was, would be something that we might amend to our own solar parameters or not, or whether it's just something that we need to keep in mind as we go forward, because obviously Maryland will continue to, to push a renewable energy MO, and, and so I don't know whether, for us, it's, the British would call it a backstop, or, or something that we might have, where we're able to, to, you know, use it as, as part of one of the parameters that we have for the installation of a solar industrial development. I don't know. But I thought it was worth mentioning, because again, the reliance on renewable energy in this state is, is critical. I mean, everybody saw what happened to Spain and, and Portugal a couple weeks ago where their power went out. So again, I just, I thought it was worth bringing up just for the sake of, of, you know, possibly discussing in the future at some point, but, you know, it is a concern, because the state is overruling us on a lot of these different projects in, in the county, so. Or maybe whether that's something we take up with our delegation, I don't know.
I don't think it has anything to do with renewable energy. It has to do with, you know, protecting our way of life. I mean, it starts with not making your password password. I mean, really, and.
Well, mine is 1234.
Password.
I'm not going to change my luggage combination.
Exclamation. But, no, the, the Acting Commander Cyber Command in the NSA, along with the head of cyber, Laura Buckholz, presented at Congress, I think last week, and did a very good job talking about this. But, you know, I wouldn't focus on just an industry, I would focus on just good behavior and, you know, best practices. I mean, talking about renewable energy, that's just another target. So I'm like, okay, we could do that, or we could talk about the auto industry and EV vehicles and whatever. I'm like, take all of that, put it all together, and what does it come down to is best practices and user, you know, on the computer, because any system can get into any system. So, I, I just don't like the paranoia about, you know, certain things. I'm like, let's just take care of ourselves and let that spread, and be good stewards of our own networks and our own systems and checking counts and whatever else, so.
And maybe to your point, Commissioner, I think you're right. I think to your point, maybe then, instead of.
I'm hearing that best.
Maybe in something, instead of something specifically looking at solar in the county, maybe is it county proper? Any, because I, I don't want to venture into, you know, our security protocols or anything, but, but overall for us, anywhere that we use IT, that we require technology of any kind, any kind of, of devices, machinery, whatever, is there a way for us to institute a policy where we can evaluate what it is that we're using to make sure that there isn't any undocumented communications, uh, uh, technology that's been incorporated with the machinery or the, the technology that we're using?
Or, or maybe verify that it's already happening.
Oh, well, that.
Yeah.
I will check.
All right, well, thank you. Thank you, guys. Yeah, sorry about that. Thank you.
It's good.
I wanted to mention one more thing. I think a lot of us get some questions about property taxes, and I, I had someone ask me last week about that they're very late with it, they were out of work, et cetera, et cetera, and, and I, I think we don't waive interest, we don't waive penalties, but we do have some payment plans and whatever. And then I had another one that his neighbor was paying less than he was, and it turns out that guy is a disabled veteran and gets some breaks. And the point I want to make is, please reach out and ask, but I've got a feeling in both cases, our staff would have handled it quite well, whether I got involved or not, and so I want to thank them for, for all they do with that. And it, it's a touchy subject, and they treated it like that and answered the questions, so I, I just appreciate it. Anything else? Agenda.
Hello, Wanda, how are you today?
Good, how are you?
I'm doing well, thank you.
Thank you for the early Friday.
You're welcome.
Thank you for all of the hard work. I mean.
Yes, absolutely, yes. I didn't think about this. This means on Fridays through the summer, we'll get our paperwork two hours earlier, won't we?
Yes.
So thank you.
Now we know the real reason you did it.
Monday, May 26th, we've mentioned it, that's Memorial Day, and everybody's off, there's a lot of activities going on, and that's great. I'll be at Hampstead American Legion Memorial Day event, which is front of, in front of Hampstead Elementary School, which the town has developed quite an area there. At 9:00 a.m., Commissioner Vigliotti will be in Tontown at 10:00 a.m. Commissioner will be in the parade at 10:00 a.m. in Westminster.
And then also, post, American Legion, post 223, I'll be at 11 o'clock, so.
And Tuesday shows bacon, and, and something you said earlier about our schedule, this agenda shows the public meetings. If we meet with a constituent, we, there's a lot of other things we do that we do not share. Because it's not public. On Wednesday, 2:00 p.m., Carroll Community College reception, Commissioners Gordon Kyler and Ralstein, an hour later, Commission, the commencement ceremony itself, Commissioners Gordon and Kyler, so.
Yeah, there's, I'm going to be with Mako.
You'll come, and then you.
I'll be at the reception, but then from there, I'm going down to Annapolis to Mako corporate event. So we'll just leave it at that. Yeah.
At 7:00 p.m., Commissioner Ralstein will be at Library Trustees. Will you be back for that?
I don't know. I, no.
It's a lot of driving during rush hour.
Yeah, let, let, I appreciate that. So Commissioner Garen will be there instead of me. No, just take me off.
So we may need somebody to try to cover for you?
If you want to.
I don't want to.
I, I think we can go without.
That's a long, that's a long ways.
It is.
Gateway graduation at 7:00 p.m., Commissioner Kyler.
Oh, and, and Wanda, I'm not quite sure. It's either going to be the 28th or the following week. I have commission on aging and disabilities, but I don't remember whether it's this coming week or the following week, so I'll get you the, the email on that. So I'll get you the email on that. Thank you.
Okay, and Thursday, May 29th, it says Commissioner Kyler may be out of town. He will be there because my lovely wife Rhonda's covering for me, and she's going out of town.
Does Rhonda get two hours off for her sacrifice?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, she's... Just ask her. On Thursday, May 29th, 8:00 a.m., closed admin, 9:00 a.m. open session. Priority Carroll, 2025 Carroll County Agritourism Passport Program. Board of Health at the next item.
Didn't they do that already?
No.
No.
Say again.
Did we get an agenda for what they wanted to talk about yet?
The Board of Health?
Yeah.
No, not yet.
Okay.
I think that it's scheduled, yeah.
Yeah. No, I was talking to the passport program.
I mentioned it in priority Carroll, so...
You mentioned it in priority Carroll.
Oh, maybe. Okay.
That might be what you're thinking. Yeah.
Sorry. Where's the lady over there?
Okay.
We tried to.
Item three, approval additional cost for the sheriff's bunk beds.
So he can sleep in the office?
Next item, EMS and fire medical director. Who will purchase medical supplies. Discussion, decision, comment, letter for Tonty Town, which we...
Yeah.
That's the one we finished today, correct?
Yep.
Correct.
So that can go away. That's not needed. Approval to change a payment schedule, recovered materials processing agreement, recovered materials operations and transfer agreement, solid waste disposal agreement, rental of emergency generator, request for additional work with replacement of water and service valve bolts in Freedom District. Energy management control, purchase installation of generator docking station, computer room replacement, public comment, admin open, agenda review. And on Friday, Sykesville Rotary, Commissioner Ralstein. Saturday shows nothing. Sunday, Commissioner Ralstein does the podcast. Anything else that week? For the following week, Monday, June 2nd, Century High School graduation, Commissioner Ralstein. On Tuesday, Commissioner Gordon, Chamber of Commerce breakfast. And it shows Commissioner Gordon, and I'll come listen to you.
Yeah, I'll be there.
9:00 a.m., Francis Scott Key graduation, Commissioner Vigliotti. 3:00 p.m., South Carroll High School graduation, Commissioner Garen. On Wednesday, Liberty High School graduation, Commissioner Ralstein. Overdose Prevention Policy Group, Commissioner Garen. Winters Mill High School graduation, Commissioner Gordon. I'm also going to that. And I'm not sure when Manchester Valleys is. I'm going to that. It's either the day before, day after. 6:00 p.m., Planning and Zoning, Commissioner Gordon. On Thursday, closed admin, open session. Priority Carroll, 81st Anniversary D-Day Landing. That's always a great group to see. Maryland Association, Mako, will attend our meeting. Century High School Stormwater Management retrofit. PFAS Phase 1 groundwater remediation investigation, hazarded materials and emergency preparedness. Public comment, admin open, agenda review. At 1:00 p.m., Westminster High School graduation, Commissioner Gordon. At 7:00 p.m., virtual solar sunshine hearing, along Commissioners Kyler and Garen. And that's virtual. On Friday, the Realtors Legislature Panel, Commissioner Kyler. On 10:00 o'clock, Fort Meade Community Signing, Commissioner Ralstein. Gersdale Academy Commencement, 10:00 a.m. And I have responded that I cannot. I have a conflict. Saturday, June 7th, shows nothing, and Commissioner Vigliotti has the podcast probably written.
Almost getting there.
Any additions, deletions? We're good. Does anybody want to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, guys.